Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the December 16 meeting of the Ann Arbor City Council. If you're able, please rise and join us for a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Would our clerk please call the roll of council?
Councilmember Dish.
Present.
Councilmember Harrison, absent. Councilmember Watson, absent. Councilmember Malik.
Here.
Councilmember Radina.
Here.
Councilmember Gazi Edwin.
Here.
Mayor Taylor.
Here.
Councilmember Ayer.
Councilmember Ackman.
Here.
Councilmember Briggs.
Here.
Councilmember Cornell.
Here.
We have a quorum.
We have a motion, please, to approve the agenda moved by Councilmember Dish, seconded by Councilmember Radina. Discussion of the agenda. Councilmember Dish.
I move to amend the agenda to enable a closed session prior to D.C. 1. Yes, D.C. 1.
To move, so to move our closed session from where it is to where it might, might be.
Yes, I think that is what I mean to do.
Is there a second? Is that friendly to the body? Excellent, it's friendly. Further discussion of the agenda as amended. All favor? Opposed? The agenda is approved. Other communications today from our city administrator?
No, Mayor.
We have the pleasure of introduction from the AAA TA. Mr. Carpenter, welcome, you have the con.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Happy holidays. I hope you were all a little further ahead in your preparations than I am, so I will be brief this evening, as I have a few other things to do. It's a pleasure to be here, as I'm sure like you, we're wrapping things up for the year over at the RIDE, but I have a couple of recaps and things to look forward to, to, that I can share with you. First of all, I think it's been a big year for us on a couple of fronts. Two things, you may recall, we won a millage in 2022. Those funds began arriving this summer, and I'm happy to let you and everyone know that all of the promises made in that millage, all the services that we're committed to, have been delivered. Some of them were delivered in August, some of them earlier in the year. So we're happy to say promises kept once again, and excited for all of our residents here and elsewhere in the county. We're providing more frequent service on the weekends, longer hours of service on all days, and it's something that I think dovetails very well with the city's commitments to climate action, and particularly the T1 zoning opportunities. So thank you for that. We're happy to let folks know we are having some holiday service changes. If anyone's interested about the holiday hours for the buses this week and over the holidays, please check our website or our social media. Another big thing that happened this year, as some of you will remember, and some of you were there, we had a $25 million grant to win from the federal transit administration. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and others for being there and speaking. We are looking forward to pulling the trigger on all of that stuff early in the new year. I will share with you, as we've shared with our board, there is some questions coming up about the incoming presidential administration's feeling towards in-progress grants. We're working to make sure we've tightened down everything we can on our end, and I'll make sure to give you the alls clear as soon as we're sure the funds have been nailed down and they're going to be delivered. Another big thing that's been a big deal for us this year that'll be important coming forward, you may recall that we rebuilt the Ann Arbor Downtown Bus Terminal about 10 years ago, the Blake. We're making great strides on the plans for the Ypsilanti Transit Center. We hope to start turning dirt maybe in 2027, but we're having a lot of fun with our colleagues in Ypsilanti over the planning processes. So if you hear something about that, be happy to answer any questions. And then finally, the Get Downtown program, which some of you may recall is a partnership between the city, the Ann Arbor DDA, and the RIDE, celebrating its 25th birthday this year. So we're very happy about that. I know some of you are very familiar with that program. There are 200 downtown Ann Arbor businesses that participate in that. There are over 3,000 passes in circulation right now, so definitely a win-win-win and an example of great partnerships. So in closing, if there's ever anything that any of us can do for any of you, please don't hesitate to give us a call. Otherwise, have a great rest of your evening and a pleasant holidays. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Carpenter. We now come to public comment reserve time. Public comment reserve time is an opportunity for members of the public to speak to council and the community about matters of municipal interest. To speak at public comment reserve time, one needs to have signed up in advance by contacting our city clerk. Speakers in all instances will have three minutes in which to speak, so please pay close attention to the time. Our clerk or the time clock will notify you when 30 seconds are remaining and when your time has expired. When your time has expired, please conclude your remarks and cede the floor. Our first speaker today is Molly Kleinman.
Molly Kleinman on Zoom, can go ahead and speak.
Hi. As you've just heard, my name is Molly Kleinman. I live in Ward 4, just off of Packard, south of Stadium. I'm calling to talk about CA 3, the sidewalks snow removal contract, and about our transportation priorities more generally. During my time on Transportation Commission, we spent a lot of time on sidewalk snow removal and its importance for keeping a critical part of our transportation infrastructure functional. So I was happy to see this on the agenda until I realized that it was only for city-maintained sidewalks and some mid-block crossings. Given that it is already December, I am assuming that no further sidewalks snow removal plans are forthcoming. If that's correct, this contract is barely nibbling around the edges of a very large and serious problem that we have known about for years. It's true that the city determined it does not do a good job of clearing sidewalks it's responsible for, and I assume this contract is meant to remedy that, and that's great. But it still leaves most of Ann Arbor's 400 miles of sidewalks to the whims of property owners. The extremely limited nature of this contract, at the same time that the city is taking much larger steps and making bigger investments in street snow removal, feels to me like it is indicative of a larger problem. In short, too many of our roads are unsafe for everyone outside of a car, and instead of seeing it as an urgent matter, we keep nibbling around the edges. Last week, two different vulnerable road users, one pedestrian and one bicyclist, were seriously injured by drivers on Packard. One of them was my neighbor, Lauren Bonderrand, who suffered two broken ribs when a driver darted across traffic while making a left turn and struck him as he was biking in the bike lane. Lauren is a year-round bike rider who bikes his daughter to daycare, bikes himself to work, and uses his bike for errands. Now, he is recovering from his injuries. He's gonna have to repair or replace his primary means of transportation, and he's navigating insurance claims processes. Lauren gave me permission to talk about his crash, to politicize his crash, because he also sees that we need to do so much more and treat this problem with urgency. Two people on Packard in one week. We have known for years about the dangers of Packard. We have known for years that Packard, the cars go too fast, that it is too wide, that we need better, safer infrastructure, and we keep doing nothing. It's time to treat this with the urgency it deserves. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Kirk Westfall.
Kirk Westfall on Zoom, can go ahead and speak.
Hi, good evening. I'm talking tonight about CA 8, Strategic Initiative to Address Parking Equity in the Sum of $250,000. On the positive side, I suppose it's great to see that the city is generating more revenue than anticipated. Hooray, city. On the negative side, though, the fact that there's consideration to potentially spend an additional quarter million dollars related to parking subsidies is concerning on multiple levels. In the broadest sense, it highlights the level of disconnect between what the public has led to believe are council priorities and what staff sees as priorities. A year and a half ago, I shared an article with you called "The Path to Progress in Ann Arbor." If you haven't read it, please do. In that, I expressed my hope that council would do the critical work of naming what the actual priorities are for the community, determining what success would look like, and evaluating the administrator's progress toward those outcomes. You passed a resolution asking for a performance management dashboard last year, which hinted at articulating goals, but sadly, that task didn't include a deadline, and to my knowledge, there still isn't a list of priorities and deadlines. The point being, on one hand, it surprises me that one of your two key employees would ask to allocate money for parking subsidies, but on the other hand, you haven't provided staff with a definitive list of priorities either. On the actual subject of this expenditure, though, the goal of this parking equity request appears to contemplate adding rather than removing parking subsidies. If this is an incorrect assumption, I apologize in advance, but if this is correct, this should trigger an immediate disclosure of the extent to which parking is currently subsidized and begin the process of removing those subsidies and giving all employees cash instead. If it is true that the lowest-paid city employees are getting their parking subsidized the least, the equitable solution would not be to layer on more subsidies in a race to the bottom, or try to match what the county appears to do, but rather remove them for the highest-paid employees. As I outlined in my email to you yesterday, this is not about causing a net increase to employee costs, but rather simply converting these subsidies into cash payments. This is commonly called parking cash out. If that term sounds familiar, it's because it's in our transportation plan, page 104, and on the planning commission's work plan as a best practice, transportation demand management strategy. Many cities in the entire state of California already mandate this, so we should at least start by practicing what we preach. Giving employees cash instead of subsidizing parking privileges is a progressive policy, because the lowest-paid staff benefit the most from cash payments in general. They are less likely to own cars and drive alone in the first place, and it works for rather than against multiple city goals for vehicle miles traveled, carbon emissions, road safety, active transportation, and transit use.
30 seconds.
Above all, as we are continuing to see community members get hurt and killed by motorists on your streets, I would ask you to consider allocating these funds and others to an actual quick build program. Staff could easily accomplish restriping, bollarding, road diets, curb extensions, raise crosswalks, and other life-saving countermeasures with these funds if you direct them. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is James Nichols.
Thank you. I'm on here, I'm here on behalf of the Washington Area Apartment Association to express our strong opposition to the proposed ordinance banning pre-tenancy fees associated with the signing of a new lease. While we share the goal of ensuring fair and equitable housing practices, we believe the ordinance introduces several unintended consequences that would negatively impact both property professionals and tenants in Ann Arbor. Application fees cover unavoidable processing costs. Similar to the city's approach to non-refundable application fees, property professionals rely on these fees to offset the costs associated with evaluating all applications. Even when an applicant is not approved, there are significant expenses incurred in processing their paperwork. Will the Ann Arbor Building Department be refunding permits and fees or review fees for applications that it rejects? Mandating refunds for these fees ignores the practical and financial realities faced by housing providers. Waitlists provide certainty in a compressed leasing market. The introduction of the ELO in 2021 significantly shortened the leasing period, creating uncertainty and heightened competition in the rental market. Waitlists provide peace of mind for tenants and landlords alike, offering tenants first right of refusal and reducing the anxiety associated with securing housing during this compressed timeframe. These fees do not add to the overall cost of the lease and are refunded in cases where tenants do not secure a unit, with 95% of our members refunding waitlist fees within 48 hours of such instances. Limited housing supply is the root cause of the market challenges. The current housing shortage in Ann Arbor has intensified competition for rental units, particularly among students. The students' desire to find housing throughout the fall and start of the year drives the demand for tools like waitlists to provide stability and predictability. As new developments come online, the housing and housing supply increases, the need for waitlists will naturally diminish. Instead of imposing restrictive measures on landlords, efforts will focus, efforts should focus on encouraging the development of more housing units to address the underlying shortage. Restricting landlord practices does not solve this crisis. This proposed ordinance represents yet another restriction on law-abiding landlords and property professionals, limiting their ability to operate effectively within an already challenging market. This has also created new security threats where students knock on doors of current tenants, hoping to find if they're going to renew or not, to get a jump on their search. Instead of further handcuffing landlords, the city should prioritize policies that facilitate the development of more housing units, which is the only sustainable solution to creating more equitable and affordable renting market. With the, while the intent of this ordinance may be well-being, well-meaning, its practical implications would impose significant burdens on property professionals and tenants while failing to address the root cause of Ann Arbor's housing shortage. We strongly urge the city council to reconsider this proposal and focus on solutions to expand housing availability and affordability without penalizing landlords who are striving to meet the community's needs. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Alan Haber.
Hello, council. I speak on the commons again. I sent you a letter. I hope you got it and at least could see the, the basic drift. I have a picture that has touched me a lot, a little girl saying, "A park is a gift." And the city has been given a gift from wherever how things worked out of unbudgeted, unaccounted funds, unallocated funds. And the city has two obligations that it has undertaken. One is to have its contribution to the consultants, to the request for proposals for consultants, which is $40,000. That would be the city's part of a contract with consultants that, that RFP is waiting to be written, but the money isn't in the budget. And also, the revenue from the surface parking on the library lane lot have been allocated to be reserved for the development of the urban Central Park and Civic Center Commons in the city charter, which is your obligation. And that money had never been reallocated or dealt with, because there hasn't been the money, as I keep hearing. But now we just have, as a gift from wherever above providence, the freedom to actually take care of two of the promises we made. To finance the request for proposals that would come from the city, there's money from private funds raised, and also to allocate the revenue out of the parking that should be already a park to the development of the Park and Civic Center Commons. So that's obligations you've undertaken. And in honesty, you should basically use the money that is free from heaven for that purpose, among the other purposes. The particular one I say should be drawn down would be the contingency fund of what might happen from Mr. Trump. We may have great problems with him or not, but we should use the gift that we have to do the community development that we really need in this town, that so many people like and want, ever since the old courthouse commons was destroyed so many years ago. That's been a dream in the town, and you, at this opportunity with money from heaven, should use that to move forward and give encouragement to the work on the commons. We had a beautiful meeting the other day of celebrating the good ideas. I wish people would participate. This is something that needs to be done together. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Eric Ivanich.
Eric Ivanich on Zoom, can go ahead.
Hi, I live in the Allen neighborhood of Ward 3, and I'm here to speak in favor of Consent Agenda Item 3, the adoption of a contract to handle snow removal from city-maintained stretches of sidewalk and mid-block crossings. Sidewalks are an important component of our city's transportation network, and they need to be maintained year-round. I understand that responsibility had been put on our Parks Department, but they are stretched thin in terms of budget and personnel and high-priority snow removal areas, so relieving them of this responsibility is appropriate. I see that we're using the lowest-responsible bidder method rather than our voter-approved best value method in awarding this contract. Although that is unfortunate, I can only assume that this is due to constraints imposed by grant money we're using to help maintain this, to pay for this contract. I'd like to take a moment to expand on the importance of our sidewalks. Everyone has a fundamental right to move through our city safely, and I appreciate that we've adopted the all-ages-and-abilities standard for our sidewalk network. I see that some people, some public speakers intend to talk about the sidewalk gap projects along Brockman and Cressland. Those are important routes to schools such as Patton-Gill Elementary and Tappan Middle School, and it's vital that we prioritize the safety of our children, period. Now, even if these were not key routes to our schools, filling in these sidewalk gaps is still important. Children and adults should not be required to walk in the streets and mix with automobile traffic. People who use a wheelchair, walker, kingie, or crutches should not be forced to traverse lawns in order to stay out of the streets, and no pedestrian should be required to go blocks out of their way so they can remain on sidewalks. Filling in these sidewalk gaps is long overdue, and I found it demoralizing over these recent months that so many have prioritized other issues over the safety and equity that underlie the need for these sidewalks. Now, I agree that trees are important, but no single tree or small set of trees is more important than the equitable safety of our children. It's interesting, if not ironic, that most who've been advocating for trees over these sidewalks live in houses built from harvested trees, and some even choose to have large front and/or back lawns, mostly devoid of trees. So yes, we all acknowledge that no small set of trees trumps all other needs and desires, and safety is among our most important responsibilities.
30 seconds.
I understand that city staff have made it a priority to preserve as many trees as possible while still filling in the gaps with adequately-sized sidewalks, and I appreciate their efforts. But let's remember, although a few are fighting these new sidewalks, many of us who live here in Ann Arbor ungrudgingly maintain the sidewalks in front of our homes for the benefit of our neighbors and others, because we care about each other's well-being. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Alex Low.
Alex Low on Zoom, go ahead.
Hi, this is Alex Low calling in from Ward 3. Tonight I have comments on several items, so I'll try to keep each one brief. To start on CA 3, this is a good start, but it's also the sort of thing that needed to happen a decade ago. Sidewalks are just as important as transportation infrastructure as streets, yet the city doesn't seem to be taking this very seriously. Let's start spending one-to-one on sidewalk and bike lane snow removal what we spend on snow for cars. On C1, while I'm generally in favor of this, I am concerned about the way that the exemptions work. I would recommend changing the exemption language specifically in Item 2 to apply to motor vehicles parked in front of a residence that has no driveway, rather than requiring that the entire block have no driveways. I emailed the council this afternoon with a couple of examples of cases where the current language could cause problems. On C2, I am strongly in favor of this, and to be honest, the earlier public comments and opposition have only made me more in favor of it. Landlords have a ridiculous amount of power over tenants and potential tenants, and while we're working to provide sufficient housing, we also need to prevent landlords from further taking advantage of individuals who are just trying to get a roof over their heads. On the library lot, since this was brought up in another public comment, the city has very clearly taken all the steps it is required to under 2018's Proposal A, and the city is under absolutely no obligation to make expenditures to meet the unsubstantiated political promises made by the supporters of Proposal A. Now to my main point, I'd like to talk about sidewalk gaps. We continue to do precious little to resolve the 139 miles of remaining sidewalk gaps in the city. In 2024, we've filled 0.7 miles of sidewalk gaps. If we continue at that pace, we'll have another two centuries of this project remaining, a project that should have been completed in five years, but is already gone.
30 seconds.
Sidewalks are a clear safety mechanism. We need sidewalks for safety. Sidewalks allow alternatives to driving, so they're a clear environmental issue. We need sidewalks for the environment. We have mechanisms currently by which bad-faith actors can delay and deny this vital city service to others, and they often do so with faux-environmentalist pretensions. But in the end, their concerns are sure to have less depth than the mud puddles through which we have to trudge.
Thank you.
Due to that very lack of sidewalks. Live on the prospect.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Adam Juskevich.
Adam Juskevich on Zoom, go ahead and speak.
Hello, this is Adam Juskevich in the fourth ward. I'm calling tonight to speak about CA 3, a contract to perform sidewalk snow removal for scattered sidewalks and mid-block crossings. I welcome this, but I don't think it goes far enough. Back in 2022, I spoke to this body about D.C. 3, the resolution to improve the safety and accessibility of sidewalks in the winter, and told you that we need to consider our sidewalks to be part of our transportation infrastructure and clear them with at least the same priority as our streets. I urge you to get a real comprehensive sidewalk snow removal program in place as soon as possible so that our sidewalks are a safe and accessible transportation network year-round. CA 3 before you tonight is one tiny step toward this, but it pales against what we do for streets. As a city, we have voted for the importance of sidewalks time and time again, recognizing them as an essential and basic part of our public infrastructure. We have voted millages to fix sidewalks when they crumble, and we have voted millages to fill sidewalk gaps, and yet we have not taken the steps needed to ensure that these sidewalks are cleared in the winter. The city does an adequate job clearing the streets on our Priority 1 and 2 plowing routes soon after snow events, and C1, also on your agenda tonight, gives us a tool to do a better job. But we have done very little to ensure that pedestrians have safe, accessible sidewalks wherever they need to go year-round. Here's what I propose: proactive enforcement. Instead of the current complaint-driven enforcement where community standards... Instead of the current complaint-driven enforcement where community standards responds to possibly complaints possibly days later, we should send community standards out to inspect sidewalks along priority one and two plowing routes after snow events and issue notices and citations as necessary to ensure compliance with their ordinances. Furthermore, our current ordinance enables the city to clear snow and bill property owners for the expense. I sent an email to council asking how often this happens. Councilmember Ackman replied that when she asked a similar question, she was told for 2024, the city did not contract to shovel anyone's snow, but did so on one occasion in 2023. I know I filed C Click Fix tickets for businesses along the West Stadium Corridor after stumbling over icy snowdrifts across the sidewalks, and those drifts were still there a week later. That is unacceptable. Something is not working. If property owners can't be bothered, the city should do it for them and bill them for it. Since day of time, I noticed a few people on the agenda speaking about the Brockman Sidewalk Project. It is notable that, according to the most recent update, staff has come up with at least one option in the public right-of-way that preserves.
Thirty seconds.
This is wonderful news. Trees are an important part of our city, and I'm glad that we will be able to save them and still have sidewalks installed. I hope the people speaking tonight are not trying to move the goalposts. With the sidewalk gap millage, voters made it clear that filling all of our sidewalk gaps is important to us. We need a complete network of sidewalks on both sides of every street throughout the city, and we should not allow a handful of adjacent property owners to veto our city's stated priorities. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Karen Schulte.
Hi, I'm Karen Schulte. I moved to Ann Arbor when I was 13 years old. That's just shy of 60 years ago, and I've lived on Brockman Boulevard for half of those years, 30 years. I live on the strip of Brockman Boulevard between Packard and Firdan, and we are identified as a sidewalk gap elimination stretch. I'm here tonight, or actually, I think I should say we are here tonight because I think this almost entire audience is part of our support group. We're here tonight to ask your help. Before I get into that, I do want to say two things right up front. The first is, we're supportive of sidewalks coming to Brockman Boulevard. We are not here to try to talk you out of putting sidewalks in. The second thing is, I'd like to thank our two council reps. I'd like to thank the mayor, and I'd like to thank the city engineers who have met with us, listened to us, talked to us, given us suggestions, and that's been helpful. So why do we need your help? There is a tentative plan out, and we're so pleased. The plan is hopefully saving all of our trees, and so you'd think we'd smile and go home. Unfortunately, we have two concerns about that plan, even though we appreciate all the effort the engineers have made. The first concern is that four of our neighbors would lose most of their front yards. But perhaps more importantly, the second concern is that it's our understanding from all the learning we've done that that would put the sidewalks directly over the critical root zone of our trees. That's a slow death sentence for a tree. In fact, if the city code, the development code for the city of Ann Arbor warns against that process. So we're here tonight looking for maybe a win-win situation, a holistic approach to this. We're asking for you to consider traffic calming at the same time as you consider sidewalk installation. Brockman could use some traffic calming or a cut-through street from Packard to Stadium. That will only get busier as the Packard corridor is further developed. And we believe the sidewalks can be put on the street side of the trees rather than on the house side of the trees, if that makes sense. Here are the trees, here's my house. Typically sidewalks go in between those two. We're asking for the sidewalks to butt out into the street a little bit, accomplishing two things. One is narrowing Brockman Boulevard, which is a pretty effective traffic calming technique, and two, saving our critical root zones of our trees. We understand this is more expensive. To facilitate this, we are close to turning in our petition and our request for traffic calming assessment, hoping that that can access some other funds and that our sidewalks can be planned at the same time as the traffic calming. This would require departments to work together. It would require budgets. Is that the end? Oh, my God. It would require the budgets to sort of merge together, so we really do ask for your help in facilitating this. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Linda Vasky.
Hi, I'm Linda Vasky. I'm also here with the Save Ann Arbor Trees Coalition, retired Ann Arbor Public School teacher, most of my years at Clay Middle School. What began as a local concern on Brockman Boulevard has morphed into a much broader campaign that's finding support throughout our city. This easily could have been a push to, you know, change decisions on one little block, kind of a not-on-my-street plea, but instead, a large number of neighbors came together, talked, and listened to each other, and now we've grown into a group of Ann Arborites who want to fight for sidewalks, yes, fight for sidewalks, but also want to encourage and help our city complete these projects in the most responsible way possible. We truly believe that sidewalks, which expand access and safety for everyone, can coexist with traffic calming measures and tree preservation. Right now, it seems like the city operates with separate silos for each, one for sidewalk gap installation, one for traffic calming, one for tree initiatives, and I add one more, road resurfacing. Just a few years ago, Brockman was resurfaced, a lengthy and surely costly project. How nice it would have been if that project had been in conjunction with adding those sidewalks, perhaps even ones that have butted the curb, and traffic calming measures such as bumpouts or road nearing that would occur with street-adjacent sidewalks. A project like that would have improved safety on the block and complied with Ann Arbor climate goals by protecting large trees. And by accomplishing multiple goals at once, it could have been budget-friendly, too. If you aren't familiar with Brockman, what's cool about it is that it's not a rich street. It has a handful of houses under 1,000 square feet and some larger family homes. People come from all walks of life, young and old, with kids, single, retired, you name it. We believe Brockman can be Ann Arbor's showcase street of how sidewalk installation can be done right with a holistic approach that integrates those different silos, providing neighborhoods with sidewalks, maybe even shady sidewalks, and safety, all while maintaining what makes Ann Arbor a tree city. This modest street can be one that other cities like ours look to for inspiration. How do we juggle safety concerns and budget concerns and climate concerns? We can show them how. Our street and our city can be the leader in this. If not us, who? Let's walk the talk. You have a large contingent here who's willing to help Ann Arbor lead the way.
Thank you. Our next speaker is David Canard.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council members, and fellow citizens. My name is Dave Canard, and I was born and raised in Ann Arbor. I've been a homeowner on Brockman Boulevard for 35 years, and now I am a member of Save Ann Arbor Trees. I want to point out two facts regarding the sidewalk gap elimination project and its effect on Brockman Boulevard. First, beautiful, mature trees and new sidewalks can coexist. Second, from feedback we have received, this project can be completed without removing trees. That's great news. As we all know, trees provide essential qualities that improve our city environment. We need trees to cool our surroundings by providing needed shade, to prevent soil erosion, to beautify our city that many visitors comment on. After all, we are Tree Town. To improve our mental health, and most importantly, to combat climate change and keep our air clean by absorbing carbon dioxide and producing oxygen. As the USDA Forest Service says, "Trees, particularly mature trees, are climate change carbon storage heroes." Moreover, saving trees aligns perfectly with the city's carbon neutrality plan by 2030. Therefore, we want to challenge the city to install these new sidewalks between the trees and the street. Maybe this installation needs to be coupled with traffic calming or a thoughtful street modification. Some of the affected homes on Brockman have very small front yards. We hope that the city does not plan on placing sidewalks between the trees and the homes. That placement would be too close to the front of the homes, infringing on a homeowner's privacy and robbing them of their overall home value. To summarize, we ask that the different city departments, engineering, forestry, sustainability, sidewalk, and traffic calming, work together to create an innovative plan to save our trees and Tree Town and install sidewalks that meet the needs of homeowners and residents as well as the city's carbon neutrality plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Charles Reed.
Thank you for letting me speak tonight. It's an honor to speak to council. I put this on your desk before. I was planning on not passing this out, but now after I hear some of these folks in their connectivity Gestapo, as I call it, I really feel like going door-to-door with this. Here's the beautiful neighborhood. Here's the logs on the ground dead. Here's the concrete that just extends on as far as the eye can see. The citizens of Ann Arbor saw this, they would not vote for any further sidewalk millage. This is the real world. I didn't make these up. I didn't, I don't know how to Photoshop something like that. On my walk every day, I walk either four or six times past these trees. That's how I got involved. I looked at these trees, and I thought, these trees are safe. We live in Ann Arbor. And then I realized, wow, no, they're not. And when I walked past, and it started when I was walking along, and I watched them top this giant sycamore. They cut off the top. I would have rushed forward and tried to stop them, but they just cut the top off of this tree, and it freaked me right out. And every day I walk past this, and I say, never again will this happen. And the tree says to me, you know, prove it, Chuck. Are you worth anything? I know, I believe in our mayor, and if he believes in the rest of you guys, you must be all right. But this, and I know that your real goals are the same as ours, and if you drove down that street, you would realize, no, we can't take down any of these trees. I support this council. I know that what you see in these photos is not what you want to see. I want to make two points. You only need a new sidewalk on one side. To accomplish any of the stated objectives that anyone has given, you only need a sidewalk on one side. You can go over and walk down it. No need to destroy two sides. You only need a sidewalk on one side, except for somebody who's really compulsive. And the other one is, there's no need for 60-inch-wide sidewalks. Right there on Brockman, they use 48-inch sidewalks, right down by the dry cleaners. You're already using 48-inch sidewalks, and it can go down to 36-inch sidewalks for handicapped. We don't need 40-inch. So I'm glad you're going to do the right thing on Brockman, but I, after hearing these folks talk about sidewalks on the Zoom, I want to emphasize that we're still building up the Lorax crew, and the Lorax crew is building up equipment and people. And they say, children, they're going to bring children into this? You defend cutting down trees on the basis of children's safety? I used to read the Lorax to five-year-olds. I taught for 30 years, and they were ready to go to war after I got done reading the Lorax.
Thank you. Our next speaker is William Surtlick.
Good evening. My name is Bill Surtlick. I reside on Brockman Boulevard, and I'm here to talk about the sidewalk gap elimination program. My colleagues before me have spoken very eloquently, and they've hit just about every item I have on my speech here, so maybe that frees me up to talk about some other things. I did bring some visual aids with me. You should all have a copy of this in front of you, so the first thing I would certainly like to point out to you, the top page is a picture of Brockman Boulevard. We think it's the most beautiful street in Ann Arbor, and I hope after you look at the picture that you would agree with us as well. It's beauty like this that brings out all of our friends and neighbors here to fight to preserve the quality of the neighborhood and just the beautiful environment that's there. What scares us is when you take a look at the second page that I've given you there, and that is a sidewalk gap elimination project that the city completed two years ago. I don't see any reason to mention the name of the street, although you can all see it there. You have before and after pictures, and I guess the reason why we're all here is we don't want this beautiful picture of Brockman Boulevard to be the before picture next year when somebody comes here saying that they're a little bit concerned about sidewalk gap elimination coming to their neighborhood. I do want to reiterate what Karen said and Linda said. We are not opposed to sidewalks. We welcome sidewalks. We have individuals on our block with small children. They say we want the sidewalks, and I've learned in life you don't argue with people with small children, but you can put sidewalks in in a way that still maintains the integrity and the beauty of the neighborhood. And when I take a look at this before and after picture, I hate to say it, but I just don't think that the city did a very good job there. Now, we have been told, we've heard this from the mayor, and I want to thank the mayor for meeting with us, and we've also heard it from our council people, that there are proposals that the engineers have put together that maintain the trees, and we think that that's wonderful, but we don't think that that's good enough because the plan is calling for the sidewalks to go in the public right-of-way, which is going up on people's front lawns. And if you go ahead and you actually check the city code, it's in violation of city code. I'm talking about the Unified Development Code that talks about landmark trees. There is no room to put sidewalks in the public right-of-way without impacting the critical root zone of these trees. So again, as Karen articulated before, what we're hoping for is that you can build, that you can build the sidewalks out into the street. Brockman Boulevard is 30 feet wide. That's a very wide street. There is certainly room to do it there. So I've got 30 seconds left. Now I'm going to, oh, I'm all done.
I said I'm finished.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Barton. Seeing no one further, public comment is closed. Are there communications today from council? Councilmember Watson.
Although this isn't a city project, Ward Two residents and especially residents in the Thurston neighborhood may be interested in two virtual info sessions hosted by AAPS this week. The AAPS Capital Program will be hosting virtual office hours to answer questions about plans for Thurston Elementary on Tuesday, December 17th, i.e. tomorrow, from 7:00 p.m. to 8:30 p.m., and Wednesday, December 18th, from 12:00 to 1:30 p.m. Sign up at A2SchoolsBond.org through a link at the top of the page. And AAPS states that space will be limited to allow for all participants to ask questions, but the AAPS Capital Program will consider additional office hour sessions as needed.
Councilmember Adina.
Thank you, Mayor. While I know a lot of folks are filtering out at this point, I just wanted to thank everybody for coming and speaking about sidewalks on Brockman and elsewhere in the city. I know that we've had a number of conversations leading up to this, and I know that our staff are working diligently to find a plan to move us forward so that we can accomplish sidewalks while also preserving the beautiful tree canopy that exists on Brockman, and so I look forward to kind of continuing to see that this process plays out. I did want to give an update. I think most folks who are here are aware of this. We've spoken about it before, but the next anticipated information session with the city would come in early 2025, at which I believe we might have some tentative plans for folks to react to and to discuss further. And then the earliest that this project would actually move forward would be the calendar year 2026. year 2026, and so there's still some time, and I know that residents are advocating for a solution that potentially also includes traffic calming. As somebody who participated in the walkthrough with the city at a time when we were walking in the street, because there aren't currently sidewalks there, there is definitely a significant need for traffic calming as well, and so if there is a path forward that allows for us to do both, I hope that that is explored. Thanks.
Councilmember Gauzy Edmond.
You know, my wordmate just eloquently stated really everything that I was going to say. I just want to thank you all for coming again tonight. I really appreciate that you guys emphasize that you also prioritize accessibility and you believe in sidewalks, but you want it to be done in a way that also values and upholds our goals with the environment. So I want to thank you for that. And as Councilmember Adina said, we're going to continue to work with the city engineers and see what we can work on together. So I look forward to future engagement. Thanks again for coming.[661.02][661.05](applause).
Councilmember Malick.
Hello, everybody. As a runner who runs across our beautiful city year-round, put me down in favor of shaded and snow-free sidewalks. I look forward to working with my council colleagues, city staff, and members of the public to achieve these outcomes. Finally, I'd like to announce that Councilmember Watson and I will be co-hosting a coffee hour in the new year. We are planning for Sunday, January 12th, from 3:00 to 4:00 p.m. in Ward Two, with a specific location yet to be determined. And in the meantime, happy holidays and happy new year. Thank you.
Councilmember Dish.
I just wanted to say to the handful of people who remain here that we had a really wonderful evening Saturday night to celebrate the end of the bicentennial, the year-long bicentennial celebration, and there was a great theater performance that was really hilarious. There was some beautiful art, some of it made from trash, which is some of my favorite kind of art. They were representatives from both the Bicentennial Park and the Black Elk's Lodge projects, which are bicentennial projects that I hope everyone can find a little bit of money to support, and also the Statue of Kathy Kosachenko is the third, or is it? Yeah, there are three. And I just am really grateful to the city administrator for everything that you have done to celebrate us for what must have been a pretty exhausting year for you. That alone would have been enough, but there was a lot more. So, thank you.
Councilmember Iyer.
Thank you. Just a brief policy committee update. As lame duck in the state legislature continues to go on and unfortunately seems to be waning and wrapping up, council members of the policy committee, along with our lobbying firm, Dykema, have been really engaged with our local delegation, trying to help support in any way we can policies and bills that support our agenda, everything from the environment, pluter pay, workers' rights, healthcare, civil rights issues. And I just want to give a shout out to our state delegation. I was just meeting with Representative Felicia Brabeck today, kind of talking through what to expect for the rest of lame duck, and unfortunately, it's not looking great for much, much else to be accomplished, and that's really disappointing. But I, again, just want to commend our delegation for pushing as hard as they can on issues that we care about here, and commend our lobbying firm for doing everything they can in the policy committee for being so engaged. So, thank you.
Councilmember Ackman.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciated the comments that we had tonight regarding sidewalk gaps and wanting the city to approach these projects comprehensively, thinking about, you know, putting in sidewalks when we're resurfacing and also considering traffic calming. And I just wanted to remind folks that we passed a policy about a year and a half ago to integrate traffic calming within normal resurfacing projects so that we can gain that efficiency and do the work that needs to be done when we're coming in to do any work at all. So, I just felt like I should highlight that.
Councilmember Briggs.
Thank you. Well, I know a number of the folks who came out to speak about the specific project on Brockman have, have left the room. I know there's still some folks listening online, and, you know, I, I don't want to speak specifically about that project, but I did want to speak specifically around our goals to connect our, our city with a strong non-motorized network. I appreciate staff's real diligence to balance priorities and to, I know there's been a lot of effort to maintain and protect our tree canopy, but we do have a goal of having sidewalks on both sides of the street across the community, and that's really important for, for our non-motorized and our accessibility goals, and it's one that I don't want to lose sight of. I know it's kind of one of the recommendations that we received in our packet tonight, is to back away from that and to just think about having sidewalks on one side of the street, and I think we have ample evidence within our current planning framework as to why that would not be a, a good goal to back away from. So, I appreciate people's, yeah, passion on the subject, but also want to make sure we're staying focused on that, on that primary goal.
Further communication from council.
I'd like to sort of pick up a little bit about Councilmember Dish and observe that we had our closing of our bicentennial, our bicentennial year this past Saturday. I'd like to express a great deal of thanks to all the community members who have over the course of time, over the course of this past year, both within the context of the municipal organization and also free range out in the community, expressed, you know, pride and optimism for the city of Ann Arbor on its, on its 200th anniversary since the, the incorporation of the, of the village. We have a lot to be proud of over the course of our history. We have a lot to reflect upon, you know, like all, like all of us, our, our past is, well, our, our paths are mixed, and we look to have our future be better. And this is, you know, this is no different. The city of Ann Arbor takes place in the American context, and we are mindful that we have a community that is driven by, by values. And as you hear in the, the, the audience today earlier, and you hear throughout the community, those values are crucial to us. They include the values of environmentalism, sustainability, pluralism, equity, and so forth, and we look to have a community that lives by those every single day. The work of the bicentennial year and the final bicentennial project, the final bicentennial presentation could not have been accomplished without the, the yeoman work of Mr. DeHoney and the staff that he leads, and so I wish to express my, my deep and earnest gratitude there. And finally, the folks who had the pleasure of attending the, the event might have noticed that I did not have the pleasure of attending the event. I'd like to express my, my gratitude to our mayor pro tem, Travis Adina, who, who stood in for me and did, did all the honors and did them honorably. So, thank you. I'd like to request confirmation of the following appointments that were presented to the city council on December 2nd, 2024, to the Board of Review, Ryan Dibble and Catherine White. May I have a motion, please? Moved by Councilmember Cornell, seconded by Councilmember Ackman. Discussion? All in favor? All opposed? They are approved. I'd like to recommend the following nominations for your consideration to the Renters Commission, Chris Body, and to the Commission on Disability Issues, Anna Conrad. We have before us the consent agenda. May I have a motion, please, to approve the consent agenda? Moved by Councilmember, member, did I miss something? No, the first, the, the second is just a, a recommendation for consideration next time. We did vote on the first one, didn't we? Okay, awesome. Thank you. May I have a motion, please, to approve the consent agenda? I'm going to look at this side of the table now. Councilmember Ackman, seconded by Councilmember Iyer. I believe we have some staff introductions with respect to the consent agenda.
We'll go with CA 3 first. Paul Matthews should be available for that one.
Good evening, Mayor and council. I, I did receive one question today about target facility management. So, target facility management was chosen for the pedestrian islands and on-call snow removal within the DDA on our ramps and sidewalks, and so they were chosen for this work. The total contract was based on a, a number of snow removal times that we would see throughout the season, so that's what we based our pricing on, and then we have asked you to approve $150,000 for this service, and the question earlier today was whether or not our contractor would be open to additional snow removal clearing for any of our public sidewalks or sidewalks within the right-of-way that are not following our snow ordinance. And so, we reached out to our contractor. They are definitely able to engage with us to perform that additional snow removal work as requested, but there are multiple staff members in different service units that are involved in that enforcement. So, yes, our contractor can do that work, but the cost would come, you know, out of our $150,000 allocation that we've asked you to approve tonight, and then, you know, the work that they would be able to do is dependent really on the number of times that we request their service to perform snow removal on the 13.2 miles of sidewalk and 136 pedestrian islands that are located within the city.
Thank you. Uh, we, don't we have something for CA 8?
CA 8 is next, and Sue, who is in the audience, and Marty Prashan are available for their introduction. I'm sorry, Ms. McCormick. Good evening.
Happy to see you this evening. I want to make sure I understand what you would like me to respond to specifically.
The question that came from Councilmember Ackman. Do you have that? This is under CA 8.
Okay.
I can read it if that's helpful.
That'd be helpful.
How many crosswalk and crosswalk safety enhancement projects are currently in the queue? How much additional funding could the department use in FY '25 to make progress on more than it had planned this year?
Right. Is this a document that most council members have seen before? Do you recall it? I, I have copies here if there are some that would like a reference. One of the things that we did was we had updated this pretty recently, and I just kind of go down through the summary of that. Right now, we have five projects that are scheduled for 2025 construction, and those are all funded and scheduled. We have two that's with local funds, and two that are also scheduled for 2026 with local funds. We do have others that have been identified for the highway safety improvement grants, and those are a little further out. Some of those that you've seen colored here would be pursued in either 27 or 28. One of the things that we don't have is an identified source yet for two of the very high-priority projects. Those rolled to the top of the list, but those would be pursued and associated with a capital project when we're working in that area. We think that those would be done in 2027 with HSIP. So, the question was, how many more dollars could we use? Well, the difficulty here is if we're working within the current fiscal year, there's not a lot of months of construction that we have within the current fiscal year. Dollars were programmed to carry over to a following fiscal year. They might be of more value to us. The estimate that I got from staff is maybe, maybe we could work with something less than a quarter of a million dollars and still maybe advance something. One of the difficulties is we'd be advancing those that are programmed from '26 into 2025, which would leave us '26 open, but again, for 2026, we'd be looking for HSIP grants. And so, funding beyond that level means basically we're taking, approaching grant funding for those projects off the table. So, the evaluation of whether or not that makes sense to try to do that with funds that we already have in hand versus take advantage of the grant funds that might be available for that purpose. So, I hope that's helpful. I don't know if there are any additional follow-on questions.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
The consent, are there any further discussion with respect to the consent agenda? Councilmember Briggs.
Yeah, I would like to pull CA 3 and CA 8 for discussion.
Further discussion of the consent agenda, with the exception of CA 3 and CA 8. Councilmember, Councilmember Adina?
I'm not going to pull it, but I do just want to note that we have a collective bargaining agreement with our firefighters' union, and one of the things that I think is worth noting is I believe we will be the first city in the state to approve mental health days for our firefighters, and so I know that that is something that was incredibly important to their negotiations and that the city was happy to be able to accommodate, and so I am grateful we're able to move this contract forward and make sure that our, our firefighters are covered under a, a strong contract.
Further discussion. Mr. DeHoney.
Mayor, I think it's worth noting, according to staff, this is only the second time in 35 years that the contract has been negotiated on time. We're proud of that.
Further discussion. All in favor of the consent agenda, with the exception of CA 3 and CA 8? Please say aye. Opposed? The consent agenda, with the exception of 38, CA 3 and CA 8, is approved with 10 council members present, all voting the affirmative, thus satisfying the eight-vote requirement with respect to CA 1. CA 7. CA 3, resolution to approve a general services contract with Target Facility Management LLC for sidewalk snow removal services not to exceed $150,000, moved by Councilmember Briggs, seconded by Councilmember Cornell. Discussion of CA 3. Councilmember Briggs.
Thank you, and thanks for that initial staff response. Let me begin by saying that I am very excited about CA 3. I think it's a big move forward for our city. We have had challenges with having park staff going out and, and doing this, doing this work across the city. Essentially means that our important park facilities aren't getting cleared until later, and those are important access points through our community, so that's a, expediting this work and making sure it's happening simultaneously is really important, and I think a, a big step forward to improving winter connectivity in our community. I did want to follow up on some of the public comments that were raised and ask some additional follow-up questions. My specific question was around, do we have the staff internally to be able to do the, if folks aren't meeting our snow, our private winter sidewalk clearing ordinance, they've been ticketed and they haven't cleared their, their sidewalks in the appropriate amount of time, our ordinance does allow for us to go out and clear those sidewalks. We have not done that. We have not used that part of our, our, our code. We did update it this past year, and I think this is a priority for our community. So, the question is, you know, do we have the ability to do that internally? We have the ability to bill and, and make up those, those fees. That's what our ordinance allows us to do. So, do we have the capacity to do that in-house, or do we need to contract with an entity to be able to do that? I'm not suggesting that we amend this contract tonight to do that, because I think that would take some more time and thinking through with staff, but I just, I want to understand how we move forward with this part of our ordinance.
It would be a monumental struggle for us to assume responsibility for that. We really do not have the capacity to take that on.
Okay.
Several things are associated with that. One, we just don't have the people power in our staff to be able to do that. I mean, as it is now, we have augmented our ability to get support for plowing because we want to get into locals sooner. This contract will help us, because every time we round a corner, we backfill in basically the corner curb, and so this contract is going to help us do that and take care of the islands, so our, because our property owners aren't, you know, that's not really part of their frontage, they're not going to go out and clear the islands, so we're going to clear the islands and make that accessible. If we were to plan for clearing of public sidewalks... If we were to plan for clearing of public sidewalks that are currently the responsibility of property owners, there's a whole lot of issues associated with that in addition to basically the manpower that we have. And, you know, part of that has to do with the way that our ordinance reads about giving notice, about potentially citing, there's timeframes that run with that. By the time we would actually assign somebody to remove snow, whether it's a contractor or whether it is city staff, in many cases, based on the type of snow we have, the snow would be gone. It is that long-term of a delay by the time we run those processes of notification, et cetera. So if we're going to consider something like that, we probably need to go back and look at that ordinance. We also need to take a look at the ability of other staff in the units that we're talking about, which include community standards and which include financing, being able to execute those other pieces of the ordinance, which is why we can't, we can't speak for everyone about how effectively we could do that. But from a standpoint of being able to have contract dollars to support some of that clearing, should all those things come together, there may be some wiggle room within the contract we currently have. You know, we did a pretty good job of estimating what we think we might need, but if we, if we don't have multiple big storms, we may have some dollars within that. And that's why Mr. Matthews, you know, suggested that we may have some free board within that $150,000 to do some assistance, but likely not if we have lots of different snows and are going out multiple times.
Mr. Daughtry? Oh, Mr. Daughtry, sure.
Just to add that if it came down to a point where we needed to potentially amend the contract with additional dollars, if this was a significant issue we were confronted with, we would find a way to do that. So the money is really not the issue for this.
Further discussion. I think you hit the three minutes.
I'm sure I did.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Gazziano.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, staff and Ms. McCormick, for going over some of the potential possibilities of this contract and whether or not it could be amended. One thing I want to raise to our attention is that sidewalks, snow removal is a significant issue among people with disabilities and older adults. And as a liaison to the Commission on Disability Issues, we've been hearing collectively as a group from a ton of residents, I believe the chair recently emailed you about it as well, of residents asking if the, of the city's volunteer-based snow match program was going to run again. And my understanding is that is not going to happen. And I guess I'm saying all of this to say that, you know, I'm hoping that we can, if not amend this contract, think about other creative ways, that we could have some sort of city-based service that could help specifically older adults and people with disabilities. I know that in Detroit, for example, they used, I believe, some of their art buyer dollars to contract a C3. And we have an organization called Snow Buddies in the city that potentially could be, you know, interested. I don't know of their capacity, but hoping we can think about the accessibility of this as well. Thank you.
Further discussion. Councilmember Briggs?
Yeah, I appreciate that additional feedback. I mean, we have revisited this ordinance a few times, and we have not been informed during that process that, that we had a challenge with the enforcement piece of that. I can understand the logistics of that and that being accurate. This is a priority. We've been, we've had a number of resolutions since, since I've been on council trying to make progress on this. I think, as some of the public commenters spoke, you know, we, we need to, we really need to make headway on this. And there are some persistent challenges, including business owners along, you know, major corridors that are just not clearing their sidewalks. And when you see snow after snow after snow, it's a compounded issue. So I am hoping that, that staff can go back, you know, after this meeting and identify it looks like Target has the ability to take on this work. We have the ability through our ordinance to bill, to recoup the fees, so it should be revenue due trail for us in the long term. You know, we, we need to figure out how, you know, when we've had a snowstorm and snow is accumulating, how we, we make sure that our sidewalks are, are clear of snow.
Councilwoman Cornell?
I wanted to thank city staff for bringing this up and to work on this, because this was one of the very first things that came to me as a new council member when I was newly elected. I know that some of the comments were around this needs to be citywide, which I don't disagree with, but I just wanted to quickly point out that on 12/23/22, the city did provide, city staff did provide a memo to city council that looked at all of the different options for snow removal and what that might cost. And so, yes, this is a small nibble, but it is a small nibble of if we were to do citywide in 2022, I can imagine the costs have caught up a lot since then. It was estimated to be $5.2 million for, for two years for that type of service. So this is not, this is a really expensive problem for us to, to be taking baby steps towards, but I think a step forward is still a step forward in addressing the DDA. When we know people want to visit our downtown and get around safely, and to your point, all different abilities, I think that's, that's just really important, and this is progress. So as frustrating as it can be, this is progress. Thank you.
Councilwoman Cornell? I'm sorry, I just want to hear it again. Councilmember Ackman?
Thanks. I wanted to point out the change in the ordinance that we made over the summer, you know, great time to enact a snow ordinance, that changed the fine structure. And in particular, we were seeking to deal in a better way with business frontages, because we heard that that was a big problem along some of our heavily traveled corridors, just persistent not doing anything. And I would think that our hope through this is that people feel the consequences of their actions and then don't do it again. But that also requires timely enforcement, and I think probably the ability to move beyond a complaint-driven process. So I hope that we can also think about in the coming budget season, you know, how we think about funding the necessary enforcement so that people know when they're egregiously not following the ordinance, that there's a penalty.
Further discussion? All in favor? All opposed? It is approved. CA-8, resolution to appropriate funding for one-time strategic initiatives, $2,750,000, and relocate bicentennial funding to legacy projects, $200,000, moved by Councilmember Briggs, seconded by Councilmember Ayer. Discussion, please, of CA-8. So for my part, I'd like to express a great deal of gratitude to the administrator for bringing forward this and to staff for helping us have a municipal organization that rolls out prudent surpluses rather than the other way around. You know, we have a vibrant community, a growing community, and what we, we see here in part is, are the results of that. You know, we, as folks know, successful cities grow. And we have, over the past number of years, focused on, on enabling growth within the community, and in part, the, the strong fiscal health of our city is the result of that policy. We also have received additional funds from the state of Michigan, which, you know, all thanks to Lansing. And finally, there have been additional marijuana proceeds which have come our way. And so we are, we are grateful, grateful, of course, for that. For my part, I'm excited for the broader conversation, but as some members of the group here know, there is one change which I would like to request council's help with. That is, and the clerk, if she'd be so kind, is sending that on out. I'd like to ask one of our council members to move the, the addition of an additional bullet. That is to say, to bring, which would be a bullet below in the first resolve clause of $100,000 to the Elks Lodge repair and restoration. This would be an additional allocation from the, from the reallocation of bicentennial funds, bringing the Elks' total allocation under this, this resolution to $200,000. The theory on that, on that request broadly is that the bicentennial projects are themselves quite important, but also that there are existing channels for material funding coming in to Bicentennial Park that are not available to the Elks. And so I'm excited by the prospect of us being able to lend an additional hand in this context. Moved by Councilmember Watson, seconded by Councilmember Dish, that having been sent around. Discussion on that amendment. Friendly to the body? Friendly to the body. Further discussion of CA-8. Councilmember Watson?
I wanted to touch briefly on the $1 million that is being set aside for potential impacts from the new administration. And one of the impacts that is, that is very likely and might not even be a specific policy, but is inflation. And, you know, it will affect our social safety network, our social safety net programs most directly. Inflation has been posited as one of the main causes for the county-wide increase in family homelessness and the new entrance to our continuum of care. And inflation also makes it more and more difficult for food pantries to remain stocked and staffed. I have seen this firsthand, especially during tours I took at some of the Community Action Network sites in Ann Arbor and Ypsilanti this fall, and at JFS, which serves refugees. So these are just some of the many organizations that could be met with a decrease in federal funding or simply just have, or they could just simply have to deal with their, their funds going a shorter distance. I, I think this funding gives us some flexibility to meet situations as they arise, and I, it also helps us contribute to the broader programs that the city funds, like the Human Services Partnership at the county and many other programs for the socio-economically disadvantaged. I'm also glad to see the unarmed response funding carrying forward. And I'd like to highlight, you know, this is an additional $250,000 in addition to marijuana excise tax funds that have been committed to unarmed response, so we're carrying through that commitment, and I'm also grateful to see the funding for the Elks.
Councilwoman Dish?
Yeah, I also just wanted to say that I think it is extremely prudent to think about political resilience, and we do not know what is coming. I think you're right, we can be sure that inflation will be part of it, but we don't know what kinds of things are going to be cut, we don't know what kinds of projects are going to be stopped midway. And for us at the local level to be able to countermeasure what happens at the federal level is really important, and I'm really grateful for this foresight.
Councilwoman Ayer?
Thank you. I also wanted to just comment on the wisdom of this potential, or this setting aside of, of the $1 million. You know, we've, we've been having discussions, and we will continue to have discussions about policies that may have local impact and, and how we might respond with policies of our own. But that only goes so far, and funding is a crucial piece of it as well, and being able to make up the gap for funding that we have previously enjoyed and may go for a time without. I also wanted to thank the administrator for the inclusion with regards to economic development. I think this is yet another proof point that we are serious about economic development and getting the office off the ground and digging into the work of taking more control of our destiny when it comes to these matters. And so this allocation demonstrates that we're, we're going to, we're going to do that work. So thank you.
Councilmember Ackman?
Thank you. I have a number of things I'd like to discuss on this, but I guess taking in turn, you know, I know a lot of us are feeling a lot of trepidation about potential impacts of the new federal administration on the things that we care about locally. For example, even we heard at the beginning of this meeting from the AAA TA about how they're watching very carefully to assess whether there will be impacts to transit funds that have already been obligated. I also talked with Administrator Daughtry this morning about this allocation, and I understand that the intent behind it is to be responsive to the concerns that many people on council have raised about what could be. But the way that I'm looking at this is that it's very broad for my comfort, particularly when we know that there are several community needs, that we don't have funds, I think, to move as quickly as we would like to. So for example, we have a Vision Zero goal in 2025, which we are thus far, far from meeting, and much work to do in speed management, safe crosswalks and traffic calming. And, you know, speaking outside of transit, I know that we want to move forward quickly when our comprehensive plan passes to put in place the zoning reforms that will make it a reality. And so I'm feeling like, you know, we're not in a position to decide tonight how to best apply this $1 million, but I'd prefer that we consider these monies in the new budget cycle, you know, knowing that if something emerges that we need to respond to, we do have funds, and approach this in a more planful way in the coming months as we think about the budget. So I would propose to remove this from the current resolution.
That's an amendment to remove that bullet point.
Correct.
Is there a second? Seconded by Councilmember Briggs. Councilmember Ackman, you stole the floor.
I think I said everything that I had to say.
Discussion of the amendment. Councilmember Watson?
I think when, I think it's helpful to think of an analogous situation. One of those would be when some of the COVID-era expansion in, in the, in the social safety network, like the freeze on evictions, when that, when that expansion ended, we had a situation where immediately there was a lot more homelessness, and the city actually was called upon to allocate more money, in this case, it was $300,000, to eviction prevention. And that did, you know, keep many families housed during that time. And I think it's, while we can't say exactly what situation it would, would arise, the, the effects of, of gaps in federal funding on these very sensitive issues where, you know, families are hanging on by a thread, or organizations need to fund a staffer to keep their doors open, we've already been reached out to by organizations like Ozone House that had some federal funding just stopped from the fact that Congress can't finalize their budget. So I think this is a good, it's a good idea to keep this money, even if we can't specify, because I think we know there's going to be impacts, and we know that they happen quick.
Councilmember Redina on the amendment.
Thank you. I just have a question for staff about if we were to simply remove the, the bullet point and not allocate the, the $1 million in this way, how will this money be treated moving forward?
The money would simply go, it'd be part of the fund balance. Part of the reason for wanting, and we feel needing to be proactive in this instance, is we're talking about a coming uncertainty, and we don't know the speed with which it will come. And so if something comes quickly and council wants to react quickly, the staff would be poised to easily manage however you want to direct the funds, because it's set up. We can track where it goes, we know what the issuance would be, as opposed to scrambling in the moment, trying to find funds to do A, B, or C. This is a much easier way to do it administratively, but we will respect whatever decision council makes.
Thank you.
Further discussion? Councilmember Ackman?
I have a question. So can you speak to the mechanics of how this, if it's passed, how it would be used? How would council take action on the funds? And if we didn't pass it, what would council do to take a similar action without the pre-allocation?
The funding would be directed by council resolution, asking that it go to whatever, whatever you deem appropriate. The system would be poised to immediately execute on what you direct. Depending on what the item is, without having some structure around it, internally, there's going to be, well, what source does it come from, and what's the use? And, you know, is the money available in a certain line item? Let's say you want to do something in parks. There's a way to address all of that. We're simply, we would simply be doing it in a more bureaucratic way. We're simply, we would simply be doing it in a more bureaucratic way. If you say we'd rather deal with the items as they come up, we can certainly address it in that manner, we just believe that doing it this way is more efficient and easier for you to simply ask us to tap a line item that you've already approved. And if the money's not used, it would simply be there for another purpose.
Councilor, I'm sorry, Councilmember Ackman, you stole the floor.
So the definition of this category is kind of at the discretion of City Council, kind of agreeing that something fits within that category?
The funding is available for council. It's not a, it's not that, let me say it this way. It was included in the resolution with the intent of it being available for council use. The administration won't be bringing any measures to spend it, but our role is different from your role, and so that's why we're making the funding available to you. So it's up to council to determine what happens. And one of the reasons, Councilmember Ackman, that this is a little messy, we don't really know the difference between campaign rhetoric and operations once you're running a government. So if things come really quickly, because there's been a number of things outlined to happen on day one, we would be ready if you want to do something.
Councilmember Gauzy Edwin.
I actually just had my question answered, so I think, yep.
Councilmember Iyer, then Briggs.
So it strikes me that the allocation of a line item in this way doesn't necessarily preclude us, or preclude any one council member from bringing forward a resolution to use it for a purpose like Vision Zero, or like, you know, any of the other priorities that we have. It's just putting it in a line item and kind of putting it in a sense, I don't want to say a lockbox, it just putting it aside and knowing that we just, I think by taking this vote, if it passes, the feeling would be that we just kind of want to hold off on just running out and spending it, and wait and see what some of the impacts might be from this really, really dangerous rhetoric that's coming from the federal government, the incoming administration, that could have some very serious and debilitating local impacts. So I'm really comfortable with approaching it in this manner.
Councilmember Briggs.
Thanks. So I think it's very wise that we're planning for uncertainty. The question I have, that uncertainty could hit the city in terms of our own operations, certainly, and especially, you know, in terms of grants we might be expecting that might not get executed on, or funding that has been, you know, discretionary grant funding that has been available but is soon to be, you know, may not, may not occur in this next administration, which I guess is always, always a change, always can happen with income-changing administrations. But, and then there are the impacts that could happen on community organizations. I think we're always prepared, much, much better prepared to address issues affecting our own organization. We have a less clear process for evaluating those requests that come in from, from social service agencies. We have found it difficult even being a part of a partnership in evaluating those. And so I think it's, we should be aware that that is something that if we're suggesting how we want to use these funds, that that is potentially a little bit challenging down the road for us. But the question here is, if we're setting aside this $1 million, and maybe it grows, can we also, would staff come to us with a request? I would hope staff would come to us with a request, and say, we've had a budgetary impact internal to the city as well, that is related to this administration. We believe that this is a good use for the funds. I'm curious how you respond to that, or are thinking about that.
The first step would be for the administration to make you aware of what we perceive the impact to be. We might be able, we might bring you a solution that does not involve this particular $1 million, because the idea is that this particular pot of money is looking outward. So let me give you an example from a prior life. Federal government decides they want to do sweeps. City I worked in, sweeps happened. There was a feeling among policymakers that, is there any way for these people to get any kind of legal representation? There was a thought that perhaps legal aid might be able to help, even if they lost in the end. So having funding to get to legal aid immediately to help was important, but you have to move fast, because literally people are being rounded up. I'm not saying that's going to happen here, but my point is, anything can happen. There might be some things that we just have to live with, you know, one of the things that's sort of out there is these callbacks of grants that have previously been allocated. We don't know if that's true. We'll just have to see, and if it is, maybe we can do something about it, or maybe we just have to accept it. We're simply trying to be as prepared as we possibly can for the uncertainty that we will start to experience on January 21st. And at the same time, I have to say this as a city administrator, we want to work with the new administration wherever we can, if there's a mutual item, if we want to go after more grants. This is not a knock politically, this is simply preparation for something that may be coming to us right after the holidays.
Further discussion of the amendment. Roll call vote on the amendment, starting with Councilmember Dish.
No.
Councilmember Harrison, absent. Councilmember Watson?
No.
Councilmember Malik?
No.
Councilmember Redina?
No.
Councilmember Gauzy Edwin?
No.
Mayor Taylor?
No.
Councilmember Iyer?
No.
Councilmember Ackman?
Yes.
Councilmember Briggs?
No.
Councilmember Cornell?
No.
Motion fails.
Further discussion of the main motion. As amended. Councilwoman Ackman.
Like to talk parking equity now. And I appreciate the Administrator's response about the context for this, because I truly did not know what it meant when I read it. But basically, it sounds like there's some disparities with regard to how we subsidize parking within the city, and that that has been a source of pain internally for a while. And, you know, we want this to be a good place to work, and I understand all of that. However, I do think, without having a plan in front of us, and as I understand it, there's a committee meeting and developing recommendations, you know, I don't think that we should be setting aside money for this program. I also hope to see something along the lines of a cash-out program. This is highlighted in our transportation plan as an approach. I understand that we are trying to engage with this process on the planning commission, so that is kind of, that's my perspective on that, and so I would also like to move that we remove this line item.
Seconded by Councilmember Briggs. Councilmember Ackman, you stole the floor.
So I guess I'll say a little bit about how this works. So a city-level parking cash-out is basically a commuter benefit, where employers that provide free or subsidized parking at work also offer employees the option to take an equivalent cash payment, or tax-free transit van pool benefit, or combination of cash payment and tax-free benefit, instead of the parking subsidy. Other cities are doing this, and it's considered a very reasonable approach to impacting parking demand.
Further discussion of the amendment. Councilmember Briggs.
Yeah, I'm very supportive of this proposal to at least pull this out of our discussions tonight. I think we can certainly, the administration can bring back a recommendation to us in the new year, if there's, once that committee has met, and we can consider it under those circumstances. Certainly, I too would also be much more interested in seeing a parking cash-out program. Every city employee is provided a GO Pass, which provides them the ability to utilize transit for free. And I think that that's something that, it's a great benefit. I would hope that we also, you know, give everybody the same benefit in the city, and that is, you know, if they choose to use that benefit for, to subsidize their parking, that's entirely their choice. If they choose to use it to buy more groceries, that's great, too. And so, you know, I'm sure that there are challenges with this to some degree, in terms of how the different contracts are set up internally in the city, but I'd love to see that come to us at a future point where we can understand, you know, what's being asked of us.
Further discussion. For my part, appreciating the attractiveness of a cash-out structure, that's not what we have presently, and so I'm going to decline, for my part, decline the amendment, supporting the Administrator's efforts to equalize benefits to staff members in the here and now, understanding that we might take a different path downstream. Further discussion. Who's there? Roll call vote, please, starting with Councilmember Dish.
Councilmember Dish?
No.
Councilmember Harrison, absent. Councilmember Watson?
No.
Councilmember Malik?
Yes.
Councilmember Redina?
No.
Councilmember Gauzy Edwin?
No.
Mayor Taylor?
No.
Councilmember Iyer?
No.
Councilmember Ackman?
Yes.
Councilmember Briggs?
Yes.
Councilmember Cornell?
Yes.
Motion fails.
Further discussion of the main motion is amended. Councilmember Briggs.
Thanks. I would like to add a bullet point to this list. I'd like to suggest that we add $90,000, $90,400 to, for traffic calming. We saw in the general response memo that we have a long queue of necessary traffic calming projects that we have stagnated, and so this would help us, this is funding that staff has suggested that they could use this year to continue to expedite those, those projects moving forward. We don't have the funding available in the existing funds that these would typically be utilized from, so this is an opportunity to advance some of our strategic priorities now that we have a little bit of extra revenue.
Seconded by Councilwoman Cornell. Councilwoman Briggs, you stole the floor. Further discussion, Councilmember Redina, Dish.
I guess this is maybe a question for my council colleague. As to, if you're proposing an addition, are you also proposing a cut somewhere else in the resolution, or where is the additional $90,000 coming from?
Okay. So in staff, when asking the question, my understanding is that we would still have, even with this additional allocation, we would still have a 22% general fund reserve, and so it's still above our, you know, we have, we have excess fund, more funding than we anticipated at this point in the year. This would still bring us above the 20% base that we want to see. I had anticipated that some of those other amendments, you know, perhaps parking equity, but regardless, I still think this is a strong priority.
For clarity, the amount was $90,000, $90,400. Further discussion, Councilmember Redina, then Dish. Oh, no, Dish, thank you, my apologies.
Yeah, I meant to just say that I was going to ask the question that Councilmember Redina asked, and so that's fine, I'm good.
Further discussion of the proposed amendment.
I just want to make sure I'm understanding, is the $90,000 for a specific project that would be done right now? Is that what we're doing?
Let me get back to the portion of the email that had all the information on it. It is in the agenda response memo, it's just not pumping up in front of me.
But it is for a specific project?
So there are, according to the response, there are 22 projects in queue, six awaiting construction, three starting engagement, and 13 awaiting petition review, and additional funding amount of $90,400, $68,400 to clear construction, plus $22,000 for public engagement could be utilized. So staff also noted that they would, you know, recommend using a funding source outside of the general fund to cover the potential budget increase. I asked follow-up questions surrounding that, as to, did we have that available, that funding available? And there isn't in those other budget items, since we are seeing a, you know, a more, greater surplus than we anticipated at this point in the year. This is something that we've heard a fair amount, certainly in the 5th Ward and in the city this year, around the desire to see these traffic calming projects move forward, and, you know, something around budget time that I was, you know, I just think it's a good, good year, mid-year, good, mid-course correction.
You have a chance. Yes. Councilwoman Redina.
Thank you. I think, well, I absolutely support the effort to expedite some of our traffic calming efforts, I think I'm just a little, this feels a little outside of the normal, like this feels like something we could address as part of our upcoming budget process, as instead of reallocating from the general, or from the fund balance now, rather than the excess. I guess I'm still struggling a little bit to see where this fits within the context of this resolution.
Further discussion of the amendment. Councilwoman Ackman.
I guess I'll just say, for my part, I was hoping that we would reapply the parking equity money to speed up our traffic calming and address the crosswalk issues, so that was kind of my plan, but that failed. So, you know, just to reconsider, I think what Councilmember Briggs is suggesting is something that just does not have a significant impact on what our ending fund balance will still be if this was applied in addition to, if I'm understanding correctly.
Councilmember Malik.
I have a question, either for Ms. McCormick or Administrator DeHoney. It was mentioned earlier that by pre-funding some projects, moving them forward, it could jeopardize future grant funds. To our knowledge tonight, is there any, if we were to allocate this $90,000 tonight, is there any chance that this would potentially jeopardize any, any future funding for 2026, or whatever the case was earlier tonight?
So this really goes to, there are projects that we have in that list that are really prime candidates for the kinds of grant funding that we can pursue. And so in our calendar, we have said, we've outlined projects to pursue grant funding for '26, '27, and others that could be aligned with future capital projects. And so our strategy for funding is really about, where can we get grants and likely be successful in pursuing them? Where should we lose, use our local money? And then looking at the priorities, then saying, what can be done, what should be done in the next year with local funds, what could be considered for a subsequent year if we are successful in getting grant fund applications? And so that's, that's how we've ordered the calendar. applications? And so, that's, that's how we've ordered the calendar. So, what I said is, yes, we could, for '27, pull forward projects to '26 that we would fund with local streets. And that would, you know, that would free up that local street money for that year. But right now, the projects that we've identified, if we were gonna do any of them that are on the list, we'd be saying, we're doing that in lieu of pursuing grant money. So, we'd be using that, that local street money less effectively than we can if we pursue grants. That, that was my response.
Councilwoman Malick, you're still at the floor. Councilwoman Watson?
Ms. McCormick, just, I think you might have partially answered this, but, but what is the reason you're suggesting using a funding source outside of the general fund? Does it have to do with the grants? Or is there another reason that we don't wanna use the general fund monies? And we'd rather use the service funds?
Generally, we don't use general fund monies for, for funding streets. That comes out of our street village, or it will come out of, you know, other funds that we receive from the state to subsidize, but not generally out of the general fund.
If this is considered perhaps, like, a one-time usage of general fund, does that change anything, or is it, we'd just rather account for it?
Yeah, that's really council's discretion. It's not something that we would generally say is of a significant advantage, again, because we would still be looking to pursue those funds. We would not plug general fund money into, to cause a deferral of applying for grant monies. I mean, to us, it doesn't make sense, but it's certainly council's discretion.
Thank you for the clarification, Ms. McCormick.
Councilwoman Ackman?
I guess I'm a little bit lost based on the staff response to this question, where it was noted that traffic calming is funded through the county mental health village. So, I don't think grant funds ever apply to this category of work that I'm aware of. Am I mistaken?
The projects that we were talking about were not traffic calming projects. We were talking about the road village, the crosswalk improvement prioritization.
Oh, this is separate.
So, I just wanna make sure, maybe I confused your question?
Okay.
Oh, traffic, yeah, this was to the traffic calming
Oh, I'm sorry.
Projects in the queue, six awaiting construction, visit, for calm, yeah, street, street neighborhoods.
Again, that's, that's council's discretion to do that. We've not typically done that.
So, I just guess I wanna finish to clarify, no, just because people were asking, I don't, I think what we're saying is, no grant funds are threatened by doing this, because they don't apply to this category of work, traffic calming.
That's my understanding as well.
Okay.
Also, I guess would point out that in traffic calming, there's really two pieces of it, and I'm sure council's well aware of this. The people in queue are waiting to see whether or not they qualify. And what I'm hearing is, you would put more dollars into qualify, making qualification determinations, because the sum that I hear you speaking to is not a large sum of money for moving traffic calming construction forward, which is an entirely different issue. Traffic calming on our response is generally pretty timely, but where we have an issue in backlog are construction dollars.
Further discussion, Councilmember Dish.
Yeah, I, I have been so pleased that we were able to move more traffic calming projects forward, because the waiting was nutty. And this, I see this as a priority, but I'm, but I'm wondering, I'm sure that we have many priorities that we wanna address in this budget term. And so, I'm not sure why to put this one, I, I think I'm saying the same thing that Councilmember Redina said, but I'm not sure why to put this one now, given, you know, just, I mean, can we wait a few months and throw some more money at it then, or?
Councilwoman Gazi Edwin?
Thank you. And, yeah, I, I guess I'm gonna echo kind of Councilmember Dish's sentiment. I definitely agree with traffic calming. I want it, it's needed. There's a huge queue. But I would, I would just like more information about kind of the impact to the general fund, and also potentially discussing with all of you what other things might be part of that, getting more clarification. Sidewalks, arguably traffic calming, snow removal on sidewalks, pressing issue, it's winter. I would love the opportunity to learn more, although I do support its, its goal.
I'm afraid you've had your, your two on the amendment. No shame in it. As I, as I heard the answers to the questions, this, this change would not imperil future grant dollars, but it might use local dollars prior to our seeking grant dollars. Is that, am I mixing and matching?
No, I believe I misunderstood the question, the intent of the question.
Fair enough, okay. So, that's a logical inference of what you said, but the quest, got it. But then, I also, what I also hear is that, maybe, maybe I got this one right, that this change will not accelerate construction. This change will accelerate review.
Correct.
And the construct, and as, and implementation of traffic calming from our, is more of a construction bottleneck, construction dollar bottleneck, rather than a review dollar bottleneck.
That's correct.
So, that this change will not accelerate the construction of traffic calming.
That's correct.
Okay. Bearing that in mind, thank you, and, and understanding that that's something that I want. Oh, gracious, I, I think I'm gonna, well, I'm gonna, till I hear something different. I'm gonna decline the amendment, but want to us, have us do more on traffic calming, so that we can roll it out the door. Further discussion on the amendment? Roll call vote, please, starting with Councilmember Dish.
Councilmember Dish?
No.
Councilmember Harrison, absent. Councilmember Watson?
Yes.
Councilmember Malick?
No.
Councilmember Redina?
No.
Councilwoman Gazi Edwin?
No.
Mayor Taylor?
No.
Councilmember Iyer? Councilmember Ackman?
Yes.
Councilmember Briggs?
Yes.
Councilwoman Cornell?
Yes.
Motion fails.
Further discussion, the main motion is amended. Councilwoman Briggs?
No more amendment, but just, I wanted to say something, and I couldn't, didn't have any more time. According to our agenda response memo, there are six projects awaiting construction that are still in queue, so it would have expedited things. According, based on what I was reading, that's what I was, that's where I, I thought we were going to be able to accelerate something. So, may, maybe I'm misunderstanding through, something through the memo, but that is, that is all.
Further discussion, the main motion is amended. I will observe that the amount has increased from 2,750,000 to 2,850,000 as a result of the ELCS. Can I have a motion, please, to amend that proceeding? Moved by Councilmember Dish, seconded by Councilmember Watson. I assume that's favorable. It's friendly, rather. Friendly, thank you. Further discussion, the main motion. I'll just, again, like to express gratitude to the administrator for utilizing foresight to have this set of allocations presented to us, gratitude to staff for helping us have a city that is on a sound financial footing, and gratitude to council and the community for helping us along. Growth, all successful cities grow. We are in, we have AAA bond rating, we have a successful financial position, and that is in no small measure as a result of staff's prudence, this council's prudence, and also the vision of council and the community to embrace, embracing community that, that grows. Further discussion? Roll call vote, please, starting with Councilmember Dish.
Councilmember Dish?
Yes.
Councilmember Harrison, absent. Councilmember Watson?
Yes.
Councilmember Malick?
Yes.
Councilmember Redina?
Yes.
Councilmember Gazi Edwin?
Yes.
Mayor Taylor?
Yes.
Councilmember Iyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Ackman?
No.
Councilwoman Briggs?
Yes.
Councilwoman Cornell?
Yes.
Motion carries.
We now come to a public hearing. Public hearings are opportunities for members of the public to speak to council and the community about the specific subject matter of the public hearing. To speak at a public hearing, one need not have signed up in advance, but your speech must relate to the specific subject matter of the public hearing. That is to say, the specific item on the agenda to which the public hearing relates. Speakers in all instances will have three minutes in which to speak, so please pay close attention to the time. Our clerk or the time clock will notify you when 30 seconds are remaining and when your time is expired. When your time is expired, please conclude your remarks and cede the floor. Public hearing number one, an ordinance to amend section 5.15 and 5.16 of chapter 55, Unified Development Code Title V of the Code of the City of Ann Arbor, permitted use tables for childcare center and private school uses, and use specific standards for childcare center uses. Is there anyone in house who would like to speak at this public hearing? Is there anyone online who would like to speak at this public hearing?
Mayor, I don't have any callers online with their hands up.
Seeing no one, this public hearing is closed. A1, we have a forced irregular meeting minutes of December 2, 2024. Moved by, may I have a motion, please, to approve these minutes? Moved by Councilmember Watson, seconded by Councilmember Redina. Discussion of the minutes. All favor? Opposed? Minutes are approved. B1, an ordinance to amend section 5.15 and 5.16 of chapter 55, Unified Development Code Title V of the Code of the City of Ann Arbor, permitted use tables for childcare center and private school uses, and use specific standards for childcare center uses. Moved by Councilmember Dish, seconded by Councilmember Iyer. Discussion, please, of B1. Councilmember Dish?
As I said about a month ago, I'm really happy to see this on the agenda so quickly. This is moving forward our economic development plan, and as the mayor just said, the zoning change affects both childcare centers and private schools. I wanna focus on childcare centers. Changing childcare centers to be a permitted use in single-family and two-family residential districts, and restore, and restoring them as a permitted use in research and office and light industrial districts where they were permitted prior to 2019, is a response to a stark deficit of childcare in Washtenaw County. It's also a recognition that the development of a childcare center is a special kind of economic development. Childcare centers are the building blocks of economic activity. The childcare business makes all the other businesses go, and without it, other economic activity is reduced. Everyone who has a child is nodding at me, and I'm loving it, or was a child. A report by the Livingston Washtenaw Childcare Planning Coalition finds that there is only one licensed childcare slot for every eight children under five. That kind of scarcity makes our region one of the, the most expensive childcare region in the state. Center-based care for infants and toddlers costs as much as $14,000 a year. Childcare scarcity does startling damage to the economy. A report by the Michigan Chamber of Commerce states that instability or lack of childcare results in an almost $3 billion annual loss for the Michigan economy, and that's a loss of over a half a million dollars in tax revenues for municipalities. So, that's significant for us as well. Right now, we're leaving families to bear the costs associated with childcare scarcity on their own. They are spending their rainy day funds on childcare or depleting the nest egg they might have been hoping to invest in homeownership. Or they may be cutting back on their work hours. This isn't fair. We all benefit from robust economic activity. Moreover, this is not a small change. The special exception use process is costly. The executive director of Apple Play School, who brought this amendment petition to us, reports paying over $23,000 in fees and expenses related solely to complying with the special exception use and side plan processes. They have also incurred over $90,000 in lost revenue due to a seven-month delay in opening their new center, which will now hopefully open in March. So, think about the impact on the families who are counting on those new childcare slots to be able to get back to work. Our yes vote tonight will make it easier for childcare providers to provide childcare, and easier for the families who need them. So, thank you for joining me.
Councilmember Iyer?
Thank you. Councilmember Dish has just very eloquently spoken to the economic development impact, so, thank you, I won't go over that. I will just simply say that I'm, I'm so supportive of this, because we have a dearth of childcare centers. And I view this as gentle density for childcare, allowing it in neighborhoods where you can have a small home-based center. My daughter, when she, from ages one to three, went to one in the Dickin neighborhood, and now I'm wondering how that was possible. But it's long been the wonderful couple, the older couple, who I'm now realizing are probably, were probably my age at the time, have, have long since retired. But it was an idyllic experience, is my point. We could walk there and walk home. It was a home-based feel, just a, you know, less than a dozen kids, more affordable than the big centers. And the, allowing this, and, and hopefully seeing them proliferate in neighborhoods would be, would just make such a huge impact to our local childcare needs as a community. So, I support it.
Councilwoman Cornell?
I think Councilmember Dish and Councilmembers Dish and I covered a lot of the points. I wanna throw out a couple more stats, is that 59% of working families in Washtenaw and Livingston counties do not have access to childcare. That's an incredible amount. And there are seven and a half times more children in need of childcare than is actually available right now. That's seven and a half times. So, this is, this is a pretty huge problem. I think, from an economic development standpoint, my colleagues covered the points very well, but just as a working mom, I will say, being able to have, when my children needed childcare at that age, to have had an option either in an office center where I worked, and/or in the neighborhood where we lived, would have contributed significantly to quality of life. Cutting down on time, having to run around the kids, having to make sure you're there before time, you know, counting in traffic and things like that. Every minute, I think that we can make it so that working parents can work, but then also balance out the time that they want with their children. I can't imagine a better use of our time and our energy, and I'm, I'm just so thrilled to support this tonight.
Councilmember Briggs?
I am also very excited to see us doing what we can to make it easier to open up childcare centers in, across the city. I do have a question, I apologize, I did not ask anybody about this ahead of time, so I don't know if this is gonna roll off your tongue, Councilmember Dish, or if staff can respond to it easily. Also, in this ordinance, it says, this is maintaining the language around the parcel must have a minimum of 7,500 square feet of lot area, which seems to be a bit of a, also another limiting factor. And so, I was just curious if you recall that, or if staff might be present to be able to answer that question. I can get that answered later as well, if it's, if it's necessary. But it seems like something down the line that I assume planning staff considered as part of this update as well. Mr. Leonard, did you hear my question? And I apologize for not sending this to you in advance.
Problem. I also have Planner Julia Shaikh here, who did a lot of the legwork on this. I, you know, we simplified the requirements. You'll note that we no longer reference the special exception with this change. That was actually driving some of these changes. We did maintain the 7,500 square feet of lot area. Frankly, I don't remember a lot of discussion around it. I'll have Planner Shaikh correct me if I'm wrong in that regard. But I do think it is not inappropriate to maintain a minimum lot size, just to make sure that we're providing both a balance of, obviously, the childcare center and some outdoor space for those. We don't get into the details of how much would need to be provided in that regard for this, but I don't, yeah, in short, I don't recall a lot of balance. That's also a pretty modest lot size in the context. That's the minimum lot size, I think, for our 1C, one of our mid-density districts. Planner Shaikh, anything I missed that you would like to add to that?
None of the discussion centered around the ability to have play space. So, City of Ann Arbor has three tiers of childcare facilities. And so, childcare centers are the facilities that allow for 12 or more children at the facility. So, part of the consideration was around having adequate space for a little bit larger facilities for, for outside players. facilities for outside play area.
And hope, Councilmember Briggs?
It does. I assumed that that was what it was. I'm not going to suggest an amendment tonight, but I do think that it might be something that we might want to consider down the road, whether or not we might want to change this as well, if that provides additional flexibility in terms of opening up childcare centers. I think that, you know, you might have a small lot size, but a park across the street, and, you know, the reality is if these get licensed by the state of Michigan, and, you know, maybe that should be our primary concern. So, though I do love outdoor play space, I also really love childcare centers, so just want to make sure that we're making it real easy for folks to set these up.
Councilor Gauzy Edwin.
Thank you. I think that everything was covered by everything my colleague said. You know, as a mom of a three and five-year-old, I am really grateful for childcare centers, and I think this was mentioned previously, but it would also help with walkability. I guess lot sizes are important in that regard because in neighborhoods that are more dense, if I was able to walk and drop off my son nearby, it would really change our quality of life, so that's a great point. Thanks.
Further discussion?
I'd just like to pile on my support for this. Obviously, working parents need childcare, and the blossoming of childcare throughout our neighborhoods will affect substantial quality of life improvements for working parents, as well as employment opportunities for those who look to have a business of that nature. So this is a good thing. Further discussion?
All favor? Opposed? It is approved. C1, an ordinance to amend section 10, 413 of chapter 126, traffic of Title 10, traffic of the Code of the City of Ann Arbor. Moved by Councilmember Watson, seconded by Councilmember Malik. Discussion of C1. All favor? All opposed? It's approved. C2, an ordinance to add section 8, 532 to chapter 105, Housing Code of Title 8, Building Regulations of the Code of the City of Ann Arbor. Moved by Councilmember Redina, seconded by Councilmember Watson. Discussion, please, of C2. Councilmember Redina.
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight, we have an opportunity to move forward another critical piece of legislation to further balance the scales of power in landlord-tenant relationships here in Ann Arbor, and also to address an unconscionable and predatory practice that has, for too long, been driving up the cost of renting and living in our city. Pre-tenancy fees are fees that are charged by landlords prior to the start of a lease, and as we've learned, in many cases, before a prospective tenant has even been offered a lease. Over the last several years, the Renters Commission and each of us have received numerous complaints from residents about landlords charging hundreds or even thousands of dollars in often non-refundable pre-tenancy fees to protect prospective tenants who are simply trying to find stable housing to live their lives here in Ann Arbor. These are waitlist fees, option fees, holding fees, and other fees that landlords are charging prior to a lease, or in many cases, simply for the pleasure of being considered for a lease at all. Most, if not all of them, are non-refundable or difficult to get refunded, and they are, in my opinion, an indefensibly exploitative way for some landlords to profit even more off of our housing crisis while further driving up the cost of living in Ann Arbor. This proposed ordinance would ban all of these predatory pre-tenancy fees and limit any application fee to $50 and make it refundable after 60 days if a lease is not offered. While not all landlords are charging these fees, and while even fewer have charged some of the most egregious and excessively expensive fees that we've heard about, this practice is widespread enough that it warrants and requires our intervention. This legislation aims to make renting more affordable and accessible by preventing all landlords from taking advantage of prospective tenants prior to their move-in. It is another step toward creating a more fair, just, and transparent rental market here in Ann Arbor, and it seeks to end the pre-tenancy profiteering that disproportionately impacts low and middle-income renters who simply cannot afford to pay these exorbitant fees, particularly across multiple properties, without any guarantee that they will even be offered a lease at the end of the process. This legislation has been a long time coming, and I want to thank the Renters Commission, especially Chair Rosanita Ratcliffe and former Chair Zachariah Farah, the Ann Arbor Tenants Union, city staff, especially Attorneys Reiser and Richards, and Councilmember Cynthia Harrison for their hard work alongside me to bring this important legislation forward. I hope that my colleagues will join me in advancing this legislation to second reading and continue the hard but necessary work of rebalancing the scales of power in Ann Arbor's rental market on behalf of our residents. If I still have time, I do have a, what will hopefully be friendly amendment. I move to amend the proposed ordinance to strike the existing language of 8(c), the Planning and Development Services Unit shall be responsible for enforcing this section, and replace it instead with the city administrator or their designee shall be responsible for enforcing this section. I've shared that with the clerk and asked that she circulated.
Is there a second? I'd like Councilmember Cornell.
Very briefly, this is an effort, we know from the communication from staff that this will likely require an additional FTE for enforcement. This will allow us the flexibility to make sure that as that person comes on, that we place them in the right place, and so it allows the administrator to envision that potentially in a different department, and so just making that flexibility possible. It may end up in the Planning and Development Services Unit, but if not, this would allow us that flexibility.
Amendment friendly to the body? It's friendly to the body. Further discussion, the main motion is amended. Councilmember Watson.
I'm proud to be a co-sponsor on this ordinance because I have some recent experience with pre-tenancy fees. About three years ago, I was looking at apartments after my roommate moved out, and one of the places I was looking at didn't explain there was a waitlist fee until after I had visited the unit in person. I remember thinking that I was essentially paying for the privilege of being added to a list with no guarantee I would be able to live in that apartment. I didn't end up submitting an application at that place because it didn't seem fair. I can also imagine it would be an undue burden for people with low incomes, like students or people using a voucher, to have to pay to get added to these waitlists, especially if they need to apply to multiple apartments on a time crunch to ensure having a place to live. This is an initiative that came organically from Ann Arbor residents on the Renters Commission and their council liaisons, Councilmember Redina and Harrison. Thank you for your work and advocacy on this issue. I'm grateful as well to the Attorney's Office for the clear language in the ordinance, and this will be an improvement for renters. I hope you'll join me in supporting it.
Further discussion, the main motion is amended. I'm sorry, Councilmember Ayer.
Yeah, I just, I support this, and I'd like to be added as a co-sponsor, please.
Councilwoman Rackman.
I'd also like to be added as a co-sponsor. Thank you so much for doing this incredibly important work.
Councilor Gauzy Edwin.
Thank you so much for doing all the incredible work, and I'd also like to be added as a co-sponsor.
Councilwoman Dish.
I have a question. So the application fee must be refunded after 60 days if the applicant is not offered a lease. What if the applicant themselves finds a different apartment and wants their application fee back? Would that be possible?
Perhaps we have a... Perhaps Attorney's Office?
Ms. Richards is coming up to the podium.
Good evening, Jennifer Richards, City Attorney's Office. Could you please repeat the question?
So my question is, if someone has put in application fees at more than one place, and they settle on one place, can they ask for their... So the ordinance says that if they are refused, you know, if they don't get a lease from the person, the person has to give them their application back, but what if they do multiple applications? Can they then get them back from the places that they end up not going to?
My understanding is that they wouldn't be able to. The way it's written is that if the landlord doesn't offer it, then that's when the refund would come into play. So if they were offered it and didn't take it, of the tenant's own volition, then they wouldn't get their application fee back.
That's what I thought, and that makes sense to me, and I would also like to thank my colleagues for all of your work and their eloquence in explaining their work, and I would like to be added as a co-sponsor, please.
Further discussion? All favor? All opposed? It is approved. Ms. Corr, closed session.
Yes, Mayor. There is a request for a closed session under MCL 15.268, section 818, to discuss a privileged and confidential memo provided to council on December 13, 2024.
May I have a motion, please, to go into closed session on that basis? Moved by Councilmember Ayer, seconded by Councilmember Dish. Discussion of the closed session. Roll call vote, please, starting with Councilmember Dish.
Councilmember Dish?
Yes.
Councilmember Harrison? Absent. Councilmember Watson?
Yes.
Councilmember Malik?
Yes.
Councilmember Redina?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gauzy Edwin?
Yes.
Mayor Taylor?
Yes.
Councilmember Ayer?
Yes.
Councilwoman Ackman?
Yes.
Councilwoman Briggs?
Yes.
Councilwoman Cornell?
Yes.
Motion carries.
We're in closed session.[1232.47] DC 1 Resolution to Approve Amendment Number 1 to the First Amended and Restated General Services Agreement with Recycling and Arbor for Operation of the Drop-Off Station. For a one-year contract extension with an option for a one-year renewal. Estimated cost of amendment of $133,602.84. Renewal up to $137,610.96. Total $271,213.80. Move by Councilmember Adina. Seconded by Councilmember Dish. Discussion please of DC 1. Councilmember Cornell.
I move to be recused from this conversation due to a competing fiduciary responsibility. I move to be recused from this conversation due to a competing fiduciary responsibility due to my role as the board chair of the Ecology Center in Ann Arbor.
Is there a second? Second by Councilmember Briggs. Discussion. All in favor? Opposed? Councilmembers recused. Further discussion of DC 1. Councilmember Dish.
So, what we are doing here is to extend the contract with, for RAA to operate the city's drop-off station for one year, excuse me, and to give them a cost adjustment that amounts to a little bit more than double of what they are receiving to provide this service for us now. I want to just affirm the importance of approving this because if their contract expires, it is not clear whether they are, it is okay for them to operate. They may be able to, but we want to make sure that the pay increase goes through. That's a beneficial thing. And as, as ever, I think it is, we are in the rare fortunate position of having a mission-driven recycler who takes charge of these matters for us and who actively seeks out markets for materials and does not accept materials that there are not markets for. So, we don't wish cycle in Ann Arbor, and that's really important. But I, I believe that this agreement looks to me that it is beneficial. It is, it provides security for RAA and it provides security for the city. And I hope, I know that there are unresolved issues also around other issues about the, the drop-off station, and I'm confident that staff will continue to negotiate with RAA and, and I'm sure that that will ultimately, I hope that that will ultimately reach a good conclusion that everyone can live with because we have really two very important things here. An important service, an important service provider, and staff that's working hard to get us all the things that we need. So, vote yes.
Further discussion of DC 1. For my part, I'm excited that this is, is coming forward. We, of course, you know, are grateful to have a longstanding relation, a service relationship with, with Recycle Ann Arbor. It is our great benefit to have a mission-driven provider in our community and throughout Washtenaw County. I will also say that there is a fair bit of uncertainty, as Councilmember Dish indicated, with respect to the, the future of the drop-off station. There are some, a lot of work that needs to be done on the staff side, and I am incredibly grateful for the work that staff has done to date with respect to the drop-off station and this contract. And for, for my part, I am, you know, really grateful for staff's diligence, for their forth, forethought, for their professionalism, and the care with which they are putting this, the care with which they are working to have a service provided for residents of the city, of the city of Ann Arbor, with respect to which that we can all be proud. We have recycled in Ann Arbor for many years, and I know that we're going to be doing so in the, in the future, and I am, you know, excited that we are going to have another contract and have that, have that relationship in black and white. So, this is the way that it, this is the way it'll be. Further discussion. All in favor? All opposed? It is approved. Oh, councilmember. DC 2, Resolution to Appoint Aaron Cooper and Patricia Manley to the Independent Community Police Oversight Commission. Move by, Councilmember Watson. Second by Councilmember Gazian. Discussion of DC 2. All in favor? All opposed? It is approved with 10 councilmembers present, all voting the affirmative, thus satisfying the seven vote requirement. DS 1, Resolution authorizing summary publication of ordinance 2429 and ordinance to amend sections 5.15 and 5.16 of chapter 55, UNO 5 Development Code of Title V of the Code of the City of Ann Arbor, permitted use tables for childcare center and private school uses and use specific standards for childcare center uses. Move by, Councilmember Dish. Second by Councilmember Briggs. Discussion. All in favor? Opposed? It's approved. We have before us the clerk support, communications, petitions, and referrals. Can I have a motion, please, to approve the clerk's report? Move by, Councilmember Cornell. Second by Councilmember, higher. I did. Discussion of the clerk's report. All in favor? Opposed? The clerk's report is approved. May I have a motion? In the absence of public comment overflow, may I have a motion to adjourn? Please move by, Councilmember Dish. Thank you. Are there communications today from our city attorney?
No, thank you.
May I have a motion to adjourn? Please move by, Dish. Watson, discussion. All in favor? Opposed?